Motion to acknowledge the minutes and monthly reports for the fire department for September, advisory board for four seven, four eleven, four twenty-one, four twenty-seven, four twenty-nine, five four, five six, five eleven, the conservation commission for five, uh, six twenty-one, seven nineteen, and eight sixteen.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Announcements, Pumpkin Fest 2016 will be held from five thirty to seven thirty P.M. Saturday, October twenty-second on the Brookfield Town Common. Please bring your carved pumpkins to be registered between five thirty and six thirty P.M. If your child is under age five, they may bring a painted pumpkin. No late entries will be judged, and judging begins promptly at six thirty P.M. Winners will be announced at seven P.M., live music by Doolin' Lads from six to seven P.M. Cider and donuts will be available. Pumpkin Fest t-shirts will be for sale. For more information, please contact Ms. Lidle at five zero eight, eight six seven, six seven zero five. Again, five zero eight, eight six seven, six seven zero five. A new this year scarecrow contest. Entries may be individual, family, or group. Prizes for scarecrows will be ribbons only, and will be judged by those attending. A flu clinic will be held from nine thirty to eleven thirty A.M. Monday, October twenty-fourth at the town hall. Mr. Wallenin, District Aide to Senator Ann Goby, will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall from two thirty to three thirty P.M. Monday, October twenty-fourth. And the recreation committee is making an announcement that trick and treat, trick or treat and Halloween events will be held Halloween night, Monday, October thirty-first, trick or treat from six to seven P.M. In the Village and Common area. Meet at the fire station for a parade on the common, and we'll leave promptly at seven P.M. Costume contest in gazebo upon arrival at the common. As always, candy donations are being accepted at the library and elementary school in an effort to help those who live in the trick or treat area. Any other announcements? Anybody wish to address the board this evening?
No.
Welcome, sir.
Not bad, so.
Good. We had a couple of, the advisory boards have had some questions on the old police cruiser. I talked to the chief. He's gonna keep it for an administration cab, which no one had any problems with that. But when the cab is no longer able to keep running, we wanna, we wanna know if, you know, is that gonna be another cab we're gonna replace?
I was very surprised to see it on a detail. I stopped on the detail, asked the officer on the detail, and I was informed that it's going to be a vehicle to, um, go to court.
Administration.
And to, uh, be strictly used for details.
Okay. So what happens when that car goes?
With that surprise, I, I thought it was offline. Uh, I have no problem with it going to court and, uh, and details if it's not costing the town any more money. I think it's used wisely. Um, it's not an everyday back and forth like the chief used it, and I wouldn't be willing to put another penny into it if it, if it breaks.
When it dies, it dies. Not, not to re- replace.
Not to replace it.
Okay, that's what the advisory, that's what the members will, you know. They all think it's great if it keeps running, and they can run the court with it and not tie a cruiser up, and it gives more life in the cruisers.
Right.
Okay. That answers that then, all right. Animal control, when she left here, she, we bought a lot of inventory for the town. You know, different cages and different things, and we wanna know where that inventory is.
My discussion, I think it was with Karen, was that the new animal control officer was going to take possession of that? Have you had that discussion?
I did not have that discussion. Now, that's the first I heard.
I thought I heard that. I don't know who I heard it from, but I thought she was gonna take possession.
Makes sense.
Yeah, she should have possession.
I can check into it.
Can we, can we reach out?
Yeah, let us know. Do, do we know what the inventory is even? Over the years, of course?
Do it through email to both individuals. See what the, um, inventory is in her possession, and then to transfer. And just keep us on the loop.
Who, who is, uh, who, is she out of town or?
Sarah Perdue.
Sarah Perdue.
Is she the one from Warren or where or something?
She's from, uh, New Branch.
New Branch.
Somewhere around there, maybe from the field. It's she.
It's close, but it's not in town.
So if we need to get ahold of it, does everybody know how to get ahold? We call the police department or whatever?
We, her number, I've sent out emails with her number on it. Um, I believe it's also on the town website. She always, I've never had any complaints. Every time someone calls her, she answers back very quickly.
So, so who do we call, you know?
Sarah Perdue and, um...
Okay, but how do we get ahold of her, is what I'm...
Karen will get the number or email it to you.
Well, it sits right on the town's website.
I believe her website, if it hasn't been posted, I'll make sure it is. She was supposed to have it posted on there.
So, the bigger deal with that is dogs, and Mike is making a list of the dog licenses for her and for the police station so that the stray dogs can be quickly taken care of.
I, I, I called her a month or so ago about, 'cause I walk every day, and there was a loose, um, dog on the street, and it was a pit bull, so I called her up, and the dog was tired the next day. It wasn't around. She's very good. I mean, she'll get right back to me.
Good. Well, the last one was good, too.
Oh, Eileen was good, but I'm just letting you know that this one's very good.
Where, where are the, where are our dogs being kept if somebody loses a dog in town? When a dog is captured by her, or any animal for that matter, where do they go?
That's a question for her.
Yeah.
I know she's negotiating. She's, um, talking to North Brookfield, seeing if they wanna...
Okay, it's Sarah?
Yep.
Yeah.
Also, she was gonna approach it for the town.
Thank you.
That's why I thought we had that discussion, because we talked about, about that about a month ago.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and, uh, she was just waiting to hear back, 'cause North Brookfield wasn't ready with an answer.
What, ritualizing?
Yeah.
'Cause we were gonna put it on the agenda, but you reached out to, was it Leslie?
Right, yes, and she said that they hadn't decided yet, and Sarah followed up, and they still haven't decided, so I don't know. I talked to her about a week and a half ago.
Okay, and one other thing, I'll, when you get to chapter ninety, I'd like to be in the discussion, if I may.
Do you wanna do it now?
Yeah.
What would you like to discuss, Mr. Holcroft?
Well, what, uh, well, the first two there, we have to take that money out of that one sixty-eight, correct?
Well, it's all coming out of chapter ninety money, that's the request.
Yeah.
Well, I'm asking, it's coming out of that one sixty-eight that we've been discussing, 'cause there was not much left in the old chapter ninety.
Yeah, it's within that fiscal year.
Okay. This fiscal year.
Yeah.
I'm saying that fiscal year for the, for the request.
I didn't know that it was...
That it was spent, yeah. Comes right out of there. These are just reimbursements.
So, for, for discussion, we'll take, um, item number two up now. Entertaining a motion to approve chapter ninety reimbursement request for eighty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. Actually, attached, the form of document, approved expenses totally approved. Project request was approved, reimbursement rate, okay, eighty-seven, four hundred, uh, for the River Street project. Entertaining a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any other discussion, Mr. Holcroft?
No, no, that one, no.
Okay. Entertaining a motion to approve sixty thousand dollars for the Webber Road project?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Entertaining a motion to approve the thirty thousand dollar amount for a used catch basin cleaner truck.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion.
Yeah?
Okay. The advisory board, you know, we don't, we had, didn't have anybody in there to give us the real update on this basin truck. But the questions that did come up was, at the town meeting, we approved ten thousand dollars for a used truck, to get a used truck, or to outfit the catch basin truck.
Mm-hmm.
For ten thousand. Now, the garek, which is the clam that cleans the, the drain, that was brought out of chapter ninety money earlier. So that means there's ten thousand left. But now you, we had, the town allocated ten thousand for this truck, but now you're gonna spend thirty thousand.
No.
No? Okay, well, that's...
What you're doing is...
Correct me on it.
You're getting thirty thousand dollars in reimbursement.
Yeah.
You're, you're receiving money, you're not...
Right, but it's coming out of the chapter ninety money.
Right, but it's, it's a reimbursement.
It's, it's no, it's...
It's not town, it's not town.
So my question is, we, we talked on the phone that night, Mr. Holcroft, you called me from that meeting, and my, my recommendation was to contact the highway department, did you?
No, because they were supposed to show up at our meeting.
But you didn't reach out to them?
No.
All right.
But my question is, we allocated ten, the, the question we had is, we allocated ten thousand at town meeting to, to get this thing up and running.
Mm-hmm.
None of us were against that, okay? What we were against was taking that nineteen eighty, um, truck that they were gonna turn into a catch basin truck. And we told, we told the highway department that that did not have the right proper wheel base, you can't use that truck. And we were told earlier, if you remember, before we replaced that dump truck, that that truck, we couldn't get patched for, and it leaked water, and it was junk. And then down the road, we were told that we're gonna use that truck to, to a catch basin truck. And we said, ten thousand is not gonna be enough. And we told them about the wheel base. And the wheel base, obviously, is not big enough, 'cause you have to have a long wheel base for the garek to reach out and put down onto the truck. So, we're told, we're being told one thing, and now, now you're spending thirty thousand out of the chapter ninety money.
The only thing that I have memory of is that I believe we discussed this back in December, and we approved the thirty thousand for the request, and that's how the state accepted it.
And this is the final report that says you get the money?
Um, the ten thousand, I think, was to outfit. I don't think it was for the truck, because of the discussion you guys had, was you had a problem with the truck itself that we had in stock.
Well, the way the article read was to buy the catch basin or get a used truck for ten thousand.
To buy the catch basin.
Right, but we got the garek and all the equipment separately out of chapter ninety money, which is fine. But then you went to the town meeting, and you allocated another ten thousand.
Into fleet stabilization.
I don't remember where it came from. We approved ten thousand more.
Is that where it went?
I think it went to fleet stabilization.
Yeah, 'cause we, yes, 'cause we had put more than what we originally wanted to, and then...
Well, I think that article was strictly for that truck.
But I think it didn't go to fleet stabilization? Do you have a copy?
Yes, it definitely went to fleet.
Yeah, that's where it went.
Which we control.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we just wanna limit the thirty thousand out of chapter ninety and not allow them to touch the ten thousand?
Yeah, that's the importance of the chapter ninety, that, that you sent a report in that said, this is what you wanted to do. They approved it, you're now...
So through discussion, do we want to amend the motion to approve the thirty thousand dollar chapter ninety for the catch basin and not allow use of the ten thousand from fleet?
Well, I don't think the right people are in the room to have that conversation.
So do we wanna table this, huh?
Table that part of it to the next meeting.
Well, do we wanna table this?
No, that's money sitting in a bank. Let's go get it.
Yeah, they've got to, yeah, they've gotta get that.
So you okay with that course of action?
What, what are you gonna do?
Putting a hold on that ten thousand?
Okay, so basically, why would we, why would we go through all this coming, they came to the advisory board asking for ten thousand to do this catch basin truck? We did that. But then they went and took separate monies out to buy the garek, and, you know, the, the claw and all that out of separate money. Now you're going to chapter ninety money to get a truck for thirty thousand, plus you get the ten thousand allocated there.
I believe that ten thousand was for the body. I think that was the discussion.
Yeah, if I remember right, that's what, what it was for.
Yeah.
Well, that's not how it read, but that's okay. But what I'm saying is, so now we're up to, we're up to forty thousand plus that garek, so we're up to almost...
Which, which you all need for a catch basin truck.
I understand, and I'm talking about the figures now.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause it said ten thousand, get this truck up and running. Okay, so now, obviously, they must have been getting another truck, am I correct?
That's what this is saying.
Okay, so they're not gonna use that nineteen eighty dump truck?
That's what this is saying.
Which we were opposed to begin with. But why would we go through all that trouble allocating ten thousand, and then we turn around and just take thirty thousand out of chapter ninety?
I don't know. This thirty thousand was earmarked almost a year ago for a truck.
Yeah.
The ten thousand was earmarked for a body, and it, all the pieces had to come together to make it all work.
Right, and I believe that's still the case.
But you might be, you might be able to get a truck with a body for thirty thousand.
And again, the right people are in the room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's why I asked Dave or the committee members to reach out to Sunday and have that discussion.
Mm-hmm. And since it has...
Well, I thought someone was gonna be, can I ask Karen? I don't know if you asked them to come here tonight or not.
Uh, no, I didn't get a chance.
No, we can get either a report or, or we can...
But I don't think we could, should hold this up anymore, 'cause it's been held down for...
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not trying to hold up anything, but what I'm saying is, we, we get told one thing, and then we, something completely different happens.
We hear you, but...
And we asked three times, is this gonna be enough money? And can you, and we told them that truck was gonna be no good, it's junk, it doesn't have the right wheel base, and they said it was the right wheel base, and the truck was adequate.
I remember the discussion.
Okay, so now it's a complete reversal. This is, this is what I'm trying to, you know, this is what I'm trying to convey to you guys.
I don't, I don't know why they would have even made that argument, because they had already requested thirty thousand for a truck half a year before.
I thought they had identified based on the, the thirty thousand.
Well, we had this discussion back in February of oh sixteen, this year. And they came to redo their budget.
Which was, which was two months after this.
Right.
Right. So, let's get a report as to the status and go from there.
So, okay, so, so now, so we're dwindling down to the chapter ninety money, so we're not gonna have too much to put towards the bridge.
This is, these are approved projects that you've already solicited the monies.
That's not the point I'm making, yeah, by us, by the townspeople, right?
Yeah, so, so we're gonna get this money back. I mean, we're getting a reimbursement back.
It's not, no.
Dave, Dave's argument is that this...
No, we're not getting the money, the town...
This, this money's gonna come off the top of what's already allocated.
Right, that's money that the state gave us to spend.
And the advisory committee wants to put a large portion of that towards the bridge to compensate and offset taxes.
Right.
But we haven't gotten to that road yet. This, this is, this is what it is.
It is.
We don't have numbers yet for the bridge.
And we don't have approval for the bridge.
And we don't, yeah, we don't even have the approval for the bridge yet, so we can't go...
It's a whole other...
Oh, I, I understand, I understand that, but I'm trying to say that we have this money that's, I'm trying to say if we, you know, if we have this money, we wanna use it, use it in the right areas, is what I'm trying to say.
But this is, what we have before us is our reimbursements of projects that have already gone full.
Completed.
Yeah, they're all done.
Oh, no, no, but I'm not questioning those two.
Yeah, you're just questioning this.
I'm questioning the truck and what was brought before the townspeople, now it's a complete reversal, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Well, we should have...
Are you hearing me?
I'm, I'm hearing you, but again, I...
Are you hearing me?
We need, we need to have a representative from the highway department here to discuss it.
To understand where we are.
So my, my recommendation is that your next meeting, reach out to the highway department yourself and request...
Well, I mean, it's already, well...
That's the thirty for this, not, not the, not the ten for the town meeting that everyone agreed on.
Right, but we already, we already beat that to death before the town meeting.
It's still not beat, it's still not beat to the...
And now, now you're just, you're taking another thirty thousand on top of the ten.
Well, let's have the discussion. If you can't have it with your committee, we can have it with our board.
All right, well, I'll, I'll get them in.
Right.
Okay, now I got another thought.
So we have a, we have a motion on the floor, so, for, for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, now I got another thought. We're gonna get more chapter ninety money next year around April, May, right? And we're gonna be probably, when are you gonna start the new bridge? So we could probably...
Oh, no, don't, don't even go there.
Okay, so what if you...
Don't even...
Well, I am going there, so...
The point would be, you are, you have a grant application, and, and again, we wanted to talk about this at some point this evening. You have grant, either grant monies that are coming up...
In the works for the bridge, right.
That are coming up for bridge and other things.
Right.
And what you do not wanna do is, you don't wanna get yourself out spending money, thinking about spending money, in other directions, because if you do, they'll, the grant people will know that you're going in that direction, and you just don't wanna go there.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying next year, if we don't get the grant...
We'll talk about it then.
But I'm just giving, I'm just saying food for thought, food for thought right now, that next year, we'll have some more chapter ninety money. If, if all these, I know what's going on behind, you know, with the grants, and if all these things fail, we can still possibly use the new, new batch of money that comes in.
Cross our fingers we don't have to use it for that.
Okay, but I mean, you're gonna go before the townspeople, but...
So I can put it away?
Oh, thank you, sir.
How are you balancing this when you, now you're talking, I'm talking about money, and so are you. How are you balancing this out when you go to this special town meeting? You're gonna go there for money, right?
We haven't even had, we haven't had an article presented to us yet, Dave, so...
Okay.
Stuck. We can't...
Well, I mean, we, we have that special town meeting in, in November. Are you gonna have this, we're gonna have an answer from the grant people by then?
No, absolutely not.
Oh, no.
Heaven's know.
Okay.
Heaven's know. No, it's gonna be perfect February.
So, so you, you're not gonna wanna talk about it in another direction till February?
That, that's grant, but the bridge, the bridge that's in front of us right now, if, if we do put an article on, we, we have to have a special town meeting anyways to set the tax, right? If we do discuss that, if there's an article for it, it's either coming out of stabilization, chapter ninety, or raise and appropriate.
But now Clarence just said we don't wanna do any of those things, 'cause it might interfere with our grant.
You're talking two, two...
No, I'm talking the same as you.
No, it's, it's for the temporary days, as he said.
The temporary, we already allocated the money for the temporary.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, we had, we, we took...
All right, we're, we're going in circles. Let's, let's wait until the deadline, see what's before us, and then we'll go from there.
We took thirty-five, half of the thirty-five thousand to, to get going on the temporary bridge.
But that's what you have to vote when you know the real number.
So let's, let's get an article.
No, we voted for the temporary bridge already. You just said we, you just, you just...
Yeah, but it has to go before the town.
We approve, we approve money spending for that, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
And you just said you didn't.
That was a temporary, not the fix. You're talking the fix for the new bridge.
Right.
So we're not there yet, we haven't crossed that bridge yet.
Okay.
We haven't even crossed the temporary.
So let's, let's, let's wait, let's wait for two weeks, see where we're at with articles, and then we'll...
And so if, okay, all right, but so, so what Clarence is saying is, we, if we talk about something, then we might jeopardize our grant.
The new bridge monies.
That's what I'm talking about.
And that's what I thought you were gonna...
I'm not talking about the temporary. Temporary's already been resolved, we got money for that, you guys already voted for the money.
All right, so I'm done with, I'm done with this conversation, two weeks from now.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, no, that's good for the moment.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to address the board this evening? Hearing none, item one, special use permits. Entertaining a motion to approve the use of Quabog Pond by the Brookfield Lions Club Saturday, January twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, five A.M. to seven A.M. No, start time, seven A.M., end time, five P.M., uh, for ice fishing derby.
I'll make that motion.
Give me a sec. Any discussion?
No.
Hundred participants, twenty-five vehicles, ATV, snowmobiles, and fifty. Says it's gonna be a bad winter, too, huh? Aye, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. They say it's gonna be bad, it's gonna be cold.
Oh, yeah, forty-five.
Entertaining a motion, we have a new application permit.
It's an electronic later, there, that they have found now, and there's really no place, if you see if you decide on your name, I have to approve it online, but just so we're okay with copy, I thought it would be good if you just...
Okay. So, uh, the happy hookers are looking ahead, love that name, uh, for June third, two thousand seventeen, South Pond, Brookfield, five A.M., six A.M. start, fourteen hundred hours return time, so two o'clock. Number of vehicles, seven. Entertaining a motion to allow...
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
American Bass Anglers, District Thirty-six, Quabog Pond, August fifth, two thousand seventeen. Uh, conditions, please pick up all litter and trash after the event, thank you. Five thirty, start time, seven, fifteen hundred return time, sixteen vehicles, sixteen boats.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, signing of the presidential election warrant. Entertaining a motion to, uh, sign the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth's election for questions, ballot questions, and that's it, right?
Just four questions, seven?
But that's just for ballot questions? So we have four ballot questions, that's it?
No, he's gotta have the rest of it.
There's nothing else in here?
Oh, boy.
We can all...
Well, we should sign it.
Oh, no, okay, you're right, elections for president, representative, councilor, senate, representative sheriff. Boingo, boingo, nice condensed. Entertaining motion to sign.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
What would we do without these little posted, three M's made a million, huh? Item number four, signing a cemetery deed, I entertain a motion to sign deed to write a burial for Mr. Smith, forty-two North Brookfield Road, for lot number thirty-four.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, signing of a Finney access agreement. I am ignorant of this, I don't know if you know anything about this, Mr. Snyder?
I know some of it, uh, so that, uh, we're working with CMRPC to help us guide our way through mass redevelopment of, of properties. Um, and as a part of this, the, the town can help guide the Finneys through that process, and this allows us to be on the site, um, and the contractor to be on the site as well, uh, to do the final, uh, understanding of what needs to be done to do the final.
We, we have those, we have phase one and a phase two.
We ha, yes, but now we need to redo what needs to be done, because there is very much confusion as to what final kinds of things need to be done. We have an estimate of forty thousand dollars, and we have another estimate that says between three and four hundred thousand dollars.
For cleanup, or?
For the remainder of the cleanup, yes. So, there is dispute as to what needs to get done.
And is signing this going to put the town of Brookfield?
Nope.
Financially?
No, no, this is, what this is doing is helping us guide, uh, mass redevelopment to help them, uh, so that we can understand what final numbers are available, and then with that, uh, that the, uh, mass redevelopment one would then do the final cleanup, and then, uh, they look to redevelop La Cella, and any monies, uh, recouped from the sale, understanding that there are liens as well, would come back, uh, to that mass redevelopment.
So, the mass redevelopment's gonna pay back taxes?
You end up being on a pecking order of what monies finally come up, they're not looking for, they're, they, they understand they're not gonna be reimbursed a hundred percent.
For their cleanup?
For their cleanup. Again, mass redevelopment's looking to clean up the properties and, and get properties back in the tax rolls. And so, that, you can write for grants to be able to do that, and this is the first step in that process.
I have a hard time spending taxpayers' money to clean up private property, which, this is the road, this is the road we're going down.
This is mass redevelopment.
But this is the road we're going down.
Yeah, well, it's, it's Massachusetts' money to clean up the kinds of things that we have here.
So, I, I've been in discussion for the past month with two gentlemen that are very interested in this property.
Great.
I don't, I've, I've been having a hard time justifying an executive session for the discussion, I think this should be open.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, this is probably a good time. What is the stance of the board to? I'm searching for a word, what, what word do we use for, uh, writing off taxes? What's the word that we use?
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, too, I can't.
Is it the Board of Selectmen's call? Is it the state's?
That would, I think would be the town before than anything.
Yeah, you'd, I think that has to go before the town.
I would say within the numbers of dollars that you're talking about.
So, it would have to go to a town meeting?
Yeah, I think so. And again, quite honestly, Steve, you'd want to.
I, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, I, I think it's in the best interest to put it back into private hands.
Exactly.
Let them develop it, let them get it back on the tax roll.
Yeah, and, and like I say, this is the first step where mass redevelopment would come, come in, because they've got the deep pockets, again, it's state money for sure.
What, it's coming, it's coming back on us, but, I would be, and, and I have no vested interest in this, this project whatsoever. These two individuals, I actually approached them because I know that they deal with a lot of dirty dirt. Um, and that's the only reason why they're interested in it, because they can get rid of the dirty dirt.
Yeah, well, and the, and the issue here, and what, what makes this good, is you'll understand what that real cleanup is. Is it the forty thousand that one person said, or is it the three or four?
Well, that's where I'm at, because they know the numbers. They, they know, they've, they've seen what the rating for the dirt is, the contamination. They know what it's gonna cost them to get rid of it, they know what it's gonna cost. They're worried about the back taxes, they're worried about the lien from the state.
Mm-hmm.
And they're worried from the liability from the funding property.
Quite honestly, if I were them, I'd take advantage of this iteration.
So, it's something that, if they are interested, we might even want to place an article on the special town meeting, to see if the town would be willing to.
For old taxes.
Which is a good word, I was gonna use relieve. But I'm not, if it's not gonna cost the town anything right now, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
But, but I've, I've had, I've wanted to have this discussion, because I've been talking to them for the past three or four weeks.
Good, and, and like I say, Steve, if I were a business, prudent businessman, having this done ahead of me, and understanding truly what it is, there's no.
But that's, that's where I'm guiding them with the phase one and the phase two, because those have been done, we've, we've had the presentation.
Yeah, the phase one, but what happened with the phase one and phase two is you ended up with two reports at the end of the phase two, that are very disparate. And in fact, one of the reports, we can't even, the DEP couldn't even find the other day, so again, what this does is this helps bring all of that information out.
So, entertaining motion to allow the chair to sign?
Uh, make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, and Mrs. Finney is well aware, as I said, that she personally.
Yeah, she's already signed.
Yeah.
Alright, item number five, I received a call from a resident, Mr. Simpson, welcome. Town Hall renovations. We had the discussion two weeks ago, and we were working on a potential, uh, non-binding referendum on the special town meeting in regards to this. I was all kind of doom and gloom after our meeting two weeks ago, that we weren't gonna do anything in here. You had a different take on that meeting which you were at, so the floor is yours, sir.
Um, I guess I'll just start off by saying that now that the police station is, we're still to get a couple odds and ends as the last couple bills trickle in, but we're pretty much done with that. So, I've decided that I'm ready to be fully engaged with the, you know, repairs of the projects ongoing with the town hall, and I've been designated as the project coordinator for pursuing the grants, um, but I haven't been really involved with the fifty thousand dollars that have been allocated at this point, um, for the bathroom work. But I did sit in on the meeting with.
Paul Holtz.
With Paul Holtz and the, so Mass Historic, um, so I'm, I'm starting to get my feet under me in terms of where things are and where they're going. Um, but, I'd like to be fully involved in, involved in the bathroom project, so, to help.
Well, as we discussed last week, the bathroom project's pretty much on hold, if not completely stopped, based on a discussion.
With what they'd approve.
Well, that's, that's why I'd like to be involved in the process, so we, I, I understand where Mass Historic is coming from, and I understand where, what the money's allocated for, and I think we can move it forward, I just.
Well, we obviously can, but I don't think it'd be prudent on the town's dime, too.
But shouldn't we renovate the bathroom that we already have?
Well, that's not what we have the money allocated for, we've, we've taken two bites at one apple. We did it originally over a year ago, we came back again at this, at the annual town meeting, and we just, we wanted transparency. Originally, it was gonna be something different, renovating the, the existing bathroom, then we wanted to do the assessors, and now we're being told that we can't change the footprint down here, so to me, it's just kind of a waste of money.
I don't think there's any reason we couldn't use the assessor's space.
Yeah, yeah, and again, it was just that, the, the point was that the drawing that we have for the, I'll call it mega bathrooms, men and women, part, part of it coming into this space, what they were opposed to, and again, Bill was there, is coming into this space and carving up the space.
But taking the assessors out of there for a bathroom relocates them and chops up the kitchen.
Which is reason, I think, the concern is that it was Batsu's coffee.
(laugh) He wanted an iced coffee.
Yeah, the concern was that this is sort of the historic meeting space, until we have access to the great hall and have used up the rest of the avail, available space in the building, we have no need to, if that doesn't make sense to them, to.
My argument after our discussion two weeks ago, and I'm always changing my mind, I'm not opposed to it, is to just make our current bathroom handicap accessible, move forward with what we have going on upstairs, I think the huge thing is that elevator. Once we get an elevator in the building, then all doors open up for us.
And, and quite honestly, where Bill was at it was with the CBGD stuff.
Yeah, because what's brought me back into all this is that I'm trying to look at the long-term grant applications for the elevator.
And so, that, CBGD is a whole bunch of money. What Mass Historic would be, would be a little bit of money that could, in fact, go towards some access, but not all. And so, you've got to do some, uh, fifty-fifty match or thirty-fifty match.
Well, I'm looking at Mass Historic saying, don't carve this space up, and that's.
Until you're ready.
And that's, that's what we have plans for, that's what Bill worked towards getting those plans that we all liked, we all accepted.
Well, they don't object to the plans necessarily, they object to.
The time.
The, the time, the order of operations.
Which, which, back, back to the discussion, is that elevator and the accessibility to the second floor is.
But we, I don't think there's any objection from Mass Historic to using the assessor's office to putting a new bathroom into that space.
And we think.
Because that's, that's not cutting up this, this whole.
They don't want anything done out here.
They didn't want anything done out here until we were up there.
I, I, quite honestly, I'd be opposed to displacing the assessors and putting a bathroom in there before we have upstairs. We've already tried a couple times with the town.
Well, I, I, I believe that, at the town meeting, that there was the vote to put in the new bathroom, and that, that's where we shifted the funds from renovating the old to putting in the new.
And I'm not opposed to reshifting and having a different question, based on the discussion you guys had a couple weeks ago.
Well.
And I'm not opposed to renovating this town hall, I'm, I, when I was elected six years ago, my passion was the police station and the town hall, I'm all for it. I'm not put, but there has to be some sense of responsibility, that if the town's not gonna go for upstairs, doing this is just a waste of money, and it displaces the assessors, and then we have to spend more money over there.
Well, having, having a, a new functional bathroom would be, I think, in everybody's best interest, so.
But I, I think we have to move forward with the, with the grant process, and if we want to renovate the, the existing bathroom.
That's common ground, as far as how to get upstairs, and, and really, it's the CBGD money, coupled with potentially MHC money.
But I think we, we still need to take care of the access immediately.
So, with the CGB money.
The access, yes, I, I, but with the gears shifting, I think we need to go back into the existing bathroom and make that accessible.
I. That's one option.
Again, we've tried, we need to try to get to February to be able to get a, to get a gauge.
But I think we're putting the cart before the horse.
Let's see.
Doing anything down here before we get upstairs.
I, I think that there is room to use the money that we've allocated. And I would like to be involved in finding a way to get the, the, the accessibility and either renovating that bathroom or putting in a new bathroom. And I, I, I'd like to be more involved, I'm choosing to be more involved in that process as best as I can, so, what, what can I do?
I think, I think right now is money to get an elevator, to get accessibility up to the second floor.
So, what do we, well, I, I.
Back to the original fifty thousand, getting the access, getting the doors and getting that stuff done.
That helps the grant process.
That helps.
But just, just allocating the money helps it.
True, but it's true.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be done, just have, in their eyes, seeing a town vote with money allocated for a project helps that grant.
And what I'm saying is, you have the opportunity, because you know you have access issues, by spending a little bit of that money towards the access issues, and again, I'm not talking about them. It gets to say that you're on, you're on a path, you're doing something.
Yeah, I thi, I think any, any signs of forward progress that we can show them is an encouraging thing.
Not only the grant, but the state as well.
Exactly.
Right.
Because that's, that's the reason why that's sort of.
And he's, 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 he's smart enough and educated enough and, I keep searching for words. Friendly enough, I guess, to understand that it's a work in progress. It's nothing that we're trying to really drag our feet on, we're just trying to do it right. And doing it right, I think, allows us to get upstairs first, or to have a path towards it, and it all hinges on money.
Well, my understanding right now is that the select board is ultimately responsible for the fifty thousand dollars in the expenditure of that fund. Um, I would like to be involved in that process, how can I engage in that so that we can, I can help work with that process to, to line things up?
Right now, I'm, I'm pretty dead set against doing anything with that fifty thousand.
Not even the access that we've identified?
Yeah, we have to, we talked, I thought we were gonna do something with the door, we had discussed that.
The handicap door?
We have to do something.
We can.
We have to do.
But we're, this discussion here was the bathroom.
Oh, no, we're, that's a part of it, it's a part of it.
That's a part of it.
I mean, we can delay the bathroom, for sure.
I, I can reach out to Tantasco tomorrow and see where they're at, I had a conversation with him, Mr. Murrow, about a month ago, I went down to the shop.
So, would the select board like to, because my, my, I guess, the, the long-term way I'd like to look at this is if we have a group of people, whether, I'm, I'm sort of the project coordinator, I guess, as per designation, but I'd like to have a, a team of people that can hold this thing from beginning to the, you know, from dealing with this fifty thousand, so we can tie it in, so that we're working all on the same page. To get the, whatever is happening with fifty thousand has to be very clear and.
Oh, it is very, it's very clear, it's thresholds, it's the door, and it's the bathroom.
But nothing has happened in a year and a half.
Because, because Mr., well, it, it's been since, uh, June, when we reallocated the money for the assessor's office, and Mr. Holcraft months ago sat in that same seat and asked us to reach out to the state because he thought that there was an issue, and he was correct. You guys met about a month ago.
Yep.
Unfortunately, it moved slowly, and he was correct, that there is an issue.
Yeah. So, are, is this board going to take, I mean, I, what can I do? Is this, or how can I help this process? I wanna.
Get, get money, get money to get upstairs.
Well, I, I can do that, but I, I also want to see things happening for, or have clarity as to what's going on with the fifty thousand dollars.
As, I'm one of three, I, I highly recommend holding off on a bathroom until we know our path, unless we want to just renovate, we'd have to go back to the town, renovate the new, the existing bathroom. But the town's allocated to fix thresholds and.
Yeah, well, that's where I'm, I'm, let's get the access.
And I, I can pull the tri.
We need the access done.
I can pull the trigger on that.
And I feel that we should also talk about renovating the bathroom we have now.
But that's a discussion we have to bring to the town as well.
We have to bring it up, but it's gotta be renovated, so it's handicap accessible.
But that's, again, putting the cart before the horse, because if Mrs. Simpson has a timeline for grants to get upstairs, that could change everything.
I don't think it really changes anything.
I, I believe it does, because it gets us to a plan of what we do downstairs.
Well, the long-term plan's not necessarily gonna change, but what we can do now.
Well, it could change, because it's already come before the town several times, and they've basically said they don't want to go upstairs. And if they don't allocate money to do that, then putting any money down here is a waste.
But we won't have enough money, though, to, you know, to fix the door and to renovate the bathroom with that fifty thousand, because we were gonna do that before if we put in new ones.
I gave you a spreadsheet for all of it that could be done. But it hinges on Tantasco, just like the fire roof, when it was presented for fifty thousand, we got it done for eight.
So, so I guess where we are is, you're gonna charge with Tantasco to get the access stuff going.
I can get going on that.
Yep.
But we put them on hold for so long, I don't know when we'll get into their schedule.
But, but it's important that we start working on that.
So, I'll talk to them about the door and the threshold.
And then, on the flip side, that Bill can be in parallel with that, understanding where that's going, and with that, start understanding how. Because what I would like to do is, we had a discussion with Mass Historical, Bill's role with Mass Historical is as the local project coordinator, which would be for the next grant phase. And you'd then tie that to CBGD.
Mm, exactly.
And pull those, the, pull that strategy together and move that forward. Because then that says, you'd have the eight hundred thou, again, speaking in rough terms, it's eight hundred eighty-eight thousand, so nine hundred thousand dollars could chain elevator to get upstairs. That's the next phase of the project, so we would be asking for that kind of money. We wouldn't be asking, well, we'd be asking for roughly fifty percent of that through the town.
Well, for the, for the CBGD, there's no match required.
The, okay, so then it would only be the Mass Historical match.
And that can be matched with CBGD funds.
So, maybe there's no.
We, we may not be going to the town for any money in the near future, the, the first goal is to pursue CBGD to get the design documents and bid documents in place in the next grant cycle.
But with CBG grant, that money, don't we have to apply with the, with Warren, because for one that we had just received, you have to apply with Warren and another town?
It's not necessarily Warren specifically, but yeah, the, the group applications are more favorable, depending on the conditions.
But will we get that much money, because usually they'll set down, you know, a certain amount?
The, the first phase that we would be looking for is just the bid documents, it'd be a design phase grant, so we'd be looking to get that, that's a much smaller pot, I think it's a hundred thousand or, or even less. And once we have the bid documents in place, we'd wait till the next cycle, and then we would apply for the larger pot to get the elevator in place, so it's, it's a three or four-year grant, two, two grant cycles.
So, the grant that we got for the documents that we have now, that, that's just for information only?
No, that's, that's the, basically the feasibility study, part of it.
They call it a planning grant.
Yeah, that was a planning grant, that was a Mass Historic planning grant, that, that funded that, in collaboration with the town. And then, that gave us the phase one point one, the accessibility, the things that we had to do, and we allocated the fifty thousand dollars for the bathroom and the accessibility. And now we'll be pursuing the phase one, or phase two, basically, which is the design documents for the elevator and the elevator.
Is the Friends still in existence?
Yep.
Are they collecting, raising?
Uh, we don't have a, the Friends of the Town Hall are in existence, but there, there's no project to target money at, at this time. But they have some funds available for, if there's any small needs that the Town Hall has, so I guess, putting on my Friends of the Town Hall hat, if any small projects come up at the Town Hall that need support or funding, please seek me out as, for the Friends of the Town Hall, because there's some funds available. But, uh, that's a different subject, but, um, yes, but so, with your approval, I'm gonna continue pursuing this CBGD grant.
Oh, one hundred percent.
Yeah, and, and try to get the elevator into, for as little cost to the town as possible. Um, and it, ideally, it'd be almost no cost to the town.
That's, that's huge, right there.
But it'll be, it's not, it's not a quick process, it's gonna be.
But it, but it, it opens up a, a lot of doors.
Yeah, so, and, so it sounds like that's where, I'll keep pushing on that, but, and, just keep me in the loop as things prog, progress with the town, with the accessibility, and, um, just so we're on the same page when I start putting grant applications together.
And then, once, once we undertake the access and doors, then we have to have another discussion about the bathrooms.
Which makes sense.
Yep.
First thing is the accessibility that has to be.
At least get that done.
Yeah.
Alright.
So, I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is no other correspondence, yeah?
I did that, because we were talking, we were articles and the like for the special, uh, there's an interest to bring Article thirty-seven, which was the, uh, abandoned car, abandoned cars in the back of the, what you're, what is?
Is this through who?
This is, uh, good, roll.
Yep, here's the Blaze.
Mr. Blaze wants to bring it back, because it was tabled, that, do we need some special dispensation to get it back?
Um, if I remember right, Sharon, were you going to talk to Mr. Blaze?
I have a, the planning board has not heard from Mr. Blaze.
Oh, they have, because I remember you stating that you would help him.
He's not here to get to us either, he plans to bring anything before us, never mind the town.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it was just.
Because I remember you offered to sit down and help him out with it.
He's welcome to come to any open meeting, or to call, or to write and ask for your company's jab, he's not there.
And I, I told him the same exact thing about two months ago, on a Wednesday night at the Town Hall.
Okay.
And, and again, it's, it's a citizen's petition, it's not put forth by the town.
And, and again, because it was tabled, I just want, I wanted to understand the dynamics, but so, but I think the conversation with Sharon is more important.
And he's been advised several times to have that.
Oh, I will re-advice.
Anything else for other?
Nope.
Alright, we have, um, correspondence from KP Law that, uh, the deeds have been filed, uh, for the original grant abatement from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, um, Commissioner of the Divisions of Capital Access and Management. Commissioner of the Divisions of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, Fish and Game, for the Quabog River Bridge Project and the quitclaim for the Department of Fish and Games for the landing. So that's all filed, that's old. Any other issues before the board this evening? Would you like to discuss anything with the board, or?
I, yes.
Them behind you. Did you wanna go first, sir, or them first? They're with you?
Oh, they're with you.
Okay, so you have no business with us? But you're more than welcome to. Good luck with the conservation. So I am going to entertain a motion to enter into executive session number three. Actually, number one first, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, and mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss a discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. And once that's adjourned, to enter into number three, to discuss strategy with respect of collective bargaining litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And then to re-enter into open session for the sole purpose of adjournment. Do I have said motion?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Come to our eye?
Lick and I.
Second.
Meeting adjourned, thank you everyone.